Good evening. I would like to call the Kaiser City Council to order. It is Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counsel Herrera.
Here.
Counsel Parsons.
Here.
Counsel Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Freeman.
Here.
Counsel Reed.
Here.
Counsel Kohler.
Here.
And Youth Counsel Farris.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phone to buzz. Thank you all very much. We don't have anything tonight under special orders of business, and we -- do we have anybody here from any of our committees or commissions to do a report? I don't have anybody signed in. Okay, then we will go on to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is for the Windsor Island Golf Center liquor license application. I have one person signed up for public testimony, and that's Susan Rogers, so come on down. And she's going to talk to us tonight about an invitation to the HIV Alliance open house. Thank you for joining us. If you would just start with your name and your city of residence, and the time is yours.
Hello, my name is Susan Rogers, and I live in Salem, Oregon. Tonight I invite you to an open house on March 6th and share some information with you on the HIV Alliance. In the fall of 2018, I began volunteering with the HIV Alliance in Eugene. Through very thorough trainings provided, I learned of all the progress that has been made in helping individuals live with this chronic disease, prevent transmission, and the quality of the compassionate services provided by the Alliance staff and with the volunteers that support them. They provide free testing, care coordination, dental care, support groups, education programs, and a variety of prevention programs. HIV Alliance was founded in 1994 with the goal of providing compassionate responsive care to people living with and at risk for HIV. Since starting in Lane County, they have full services to 13 counties and another 15 counties that they just provide dental care for. As part of the growth, there was a need for programs in more rural areas where access to care and support are more difficult to find. When I saw the difference they made in Eugene, I asked, "Why weren't they in Salem?" And they told me they were. And the Salem office has recently located to a larger space on Beverly Drive just west of Lancaster. Some of the volunteering roles that I'm aware of with the Alliance are helping with support group mills, be a part of prevention education programs, assemble prevention kits. In Eugene and some other counties, they have needle exchange programs that I feel are a very important part of prevention. So I invite you to please come to the open house of the new Salem office, a location, so you can learn about the services provided and the way that you may want to help. It's on March 6th from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. The address is 3886 Beverly Avenue Northeast. It's just right west off Lancaster. They also have a Facebook page, and you can look up HIV Alliance Eugene. And they also have a webpage, HIVAlliance.org. And on there, I know there is a link to the Salem office, too. So thank you for letting me share this with you. And you have it written down, but just growing up in the -- being a young adult in the 80s, I'm sure lots of you were similar age to me and remember, you know, the --
Sixties.
Yeah, it was like in the 80s, it was like when the AIDS crisis hit, and just so much, you know, that was before they even knew, you know, that there was HIV. And there have just been so many changes in medications and supports and prevention programs. It's absolutely amazing. And the HIV Alliance does a fabulous job in supporting the people and training the volunteers.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming and joining us tonight. Does anybody have any additional questions for Susan? Well, we really appreciate it, and thank you for giving us the Facebook page and website, so we'll be able to link up social media as well and help get the word out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have anybody else signed up for public testimony tonight. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public testimony time this evening? Going once, going twice. We will then go on to a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for the Windsor Island Golf Center liquor license application. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 15th, 2019, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Windsor Island Golf located at 6020 Windsor Island Road North in Kaiser. The application is for a limited on-premises license. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicants and has no reason to recommend denial of the application. Additionally, the Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comment. It is recommended that the public hearing be open to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended the council recommend approval of the application for Windsor Island Golf under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser, and that recommendation will be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their dispensation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right. I don't have anybody testify -- signed up to testify, but however, the owners are here, so I would invite you to come on down and talk to us about what you are doing at the Windsor --
You're not shy, it's okay.
-- golf center.
Rich.
And this is five minutes for you to tell us all about the cool stuff happening there.
Yay.
So if you would just introduce yourselves and your city of residence.
My name is Rich Howard, and we live in Kaiser.
Heather, his wife, same house, Kaiser.
That sounds like a good thing. So talk to us with the -- this is on-premises or off-premises?
On-premises.
On-premises, and so what are your plans for the on-premises liquor service and other things that are going on out at Windsor Island?
So we have a full-service pro shop and 22 covered mats for people to hit balls off of, and we would like the adults over 21 to enjoy a beverage that they can buy there as well. We plan on hoping someday that a food ordinance thing can pass so we can have food trucks there. And we are planning our future building a miniature golf course
Yes.
-- for the city of Kaiser. And we are in the middle of putting flooring down for our new indoor simulator, so you can golf inside, do club fittings, club repair. We built a massage room in there, so we have massage therapy. And we are talking to somebody from the Wilson staff from Corvallis, who's going to come twice this summer and do autographs and do a kids' day.
From the driver versus driver competition that was on the Golf Channel. He took second place, and he took second place in the competition, was offered to have his senior year of college paid for by Wilson Golf, and was offered a job if he chose to pursue that career. Since he's a local to the Salem area, we were able to arrange for some onsite visits. We're also in talks with the World Long Drive Tour for having to have a World Long Drive competition at our facility in summer of 2020, which hopefully will bring some additional exposure to the community. It would be difficult to arrange the type of funding that we would want to get the Golf Channel to cover it, but it would still be nice to have 40 or 50 extra, you know, competitors staying in the local market, utilizing our, you know, boosting our economy, et cetera. And then having the opportunity to have a small-scale, similar to Kaiser Fest kind of an environment where we're, you know, with beer gardens, vendor opportunities, concerts, things like that, whatever we can do on our 25 acres to really make it a great weekend of fun. So those are the things that have cropped up immediately. Actually, we've got a --
We have a national barbecue competition interested in closing us down just for a weekend and doing the national barbecue competition that's normally televised at our location, and they're actually working on getting funding right now, and we should know within a month with their planner and their planning committee. And we are doing a fundraiser for a local elementary school for an entire weekend, and we finished the planning on that next Monday. And we are actually going to -- it's going to be in April, and we're going to try to get that guy from Corvallis.
Tim.
Tim, thank you. The -- there to meet all the kids, even high school kids, everyone really looks up to him. So hopefully, we can fundraise for our elementary schools at the same time.
Wow, that's a lot of --
[laughing]
Oh, to be young again. This is very exciting, and thank you for investing in Kaiser, your home community, but also providing something that will attract people here to enjoy the livability that we enjoy as well. Any questions for the owners? Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, really, a long ball competition, are you going to have to expand your distances?
Actually, we have, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, we have a fence that about 360 yards or so, but we have about 80 more yards of property behind that that before we actually start encroaching upon the backyards of the McNary Estates residence. And then if we utilize space not traditionally used for our grass-hitting areas, that gets us about 460 yards straight away.
I was thinking 500 yards, but I guess we're pretty close.
We're pretty close, and considering our, the time of year, we're looking at afternoon winds, things like that, plus the overall elevation related to sea level, we're estimating about 435 would be the maximum amount of yardage we'd need. And that's, that includes rollout, so they're only going to be flying the ball about 395.
It's very exciting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you hit a ball 500 yards? Is that why you're saying that?
Are you looking to enter?
Is that what that -- are you?
Because we'll be having an amateur competition as well.
And the next Tiger Woods will come from right here in Kaiser, Oregon.
That's right, she's eight.
Oh, okay, high breasts. Yes, indeed. All right, any other questions? Counsel Herrera.
Just a quick comment. Heather and Rich, good luck in your endeavor. You guys sound like you've got some really cool plans ahead. Looking forward to the little mini golf.
Yeah.
And I'll be out there, and we'll check it out, and we'll spread the word for you guys.
Thanks.
Hope you guys succeed. I think it'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we're good, thank you so much.
Yep.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak during this public hearing on the liquor license application? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing. Counsel President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the council recommend approval of the application for Windsor Island Golf under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser, and then forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for the Windsor Island Golf under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser, and that forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have an actual conflict of interest and will not be voting.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion passes six ayes and one abstention for Counselor Parsons. Thank you very much. Go forth and do good. I'd like to backtrack with everybody's indulgence to committee reports. Zaira has joined us with a parks report, so would you come on down? And thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We kind of got going pretty fast.
Hello, there, okay. Hi, everyone. So my name is Zaira Flores Marin, and I am a board member of the Parks Advisory Board for the city of Kaiser. I am in the position one for Claggett Creek Park and Wallace House, and I feel kind of like I'm hovering over them.
There you go.
There we go, better. You're good. Thank you. So thank you for backtracking to the agenda, I was running a little late, but I'm just here to give you a little report on how our meeting went last Tuesday. And we had a public comment from, oh, I didn't write his name down, but he's been coming to our meetings for a little bit now, and he's been talking about putting exercise equipments in our parks. And I actually got the chance to work with him in a subcommittee, and he's been very proactive about his idea, and he actually was able to fundraise a lot of money to get this project rolling. And part of that fundraising effort was asking for a grant from our Claggett Creek -- from our parks, from our park board. And so we went ahead and approved that request, and he will be working towards putting in two exercise pieces, one in Claggett Creek Park and one in Country Glen Park, with the goal of having that in by the end of, I believe it's June of this year. So that was pretty amazing. He was very motivated and was able to get that going here in our city with -- and then he's also expressed interest in continuing to do this in other parks, but starting off with these two parks, since these were the ones he identified as higher usage. We also got a thank you letter and photos of the solar panels that went up in our community garden, so that was also really interesting to be able to see those photos, and it was really great that we were able to get that going in the garden, because definitely it was our, I think now it's their only source of power, so they'd be able to get a lot more work done in the garden. And we just got also just reports from our parks, everything's looking good. We received some updates on the watershed report from Matt, and other than that, those were just really the only two important items that were on our agenda that we were able to hear about, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for your work on this, and look forward to a great year in the parks.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us then to administrative action, item 8A, a resolution adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions, repealing R 2018-2896. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and counsel. You may have remembered lately, we had some legislative amendments to the Development Code with regard to a master plan amendment process and also a separate one with regard to development standards alternative, but at that time, we did not adopt any fees for those, so it's now time to do that. You can see attached to the resolution, a new list, and for those of you not familiar with this, every time we change or add a fee, we just republish the entire list, so we don't have to, so we have one list with all the fees on it. So on this one, the proposed master plan amendment fee is $2,100. That's based on staff's estimate, that's approximately 75% of the work for a, as it would be for a full master plan. I don't recall the exact fee for that, but I think it's on there actually, $2,800 is the fee, so approximately $2,100 is felt to be a fair fee for that. With regard to the development standards alternative, the proposal was to have a fee of $710 based on the fact that it's very similar to conditional use permit fee, that's what the fee is for conditional use permit. State law requires that public comment be taken, not a public hearing, so we don't have to publish for a formal public hearing, but the mayor should ask if there's any comment with regard to these fees. And the recommendation is if there's no questions to adopt the attached resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on the staff report? Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this issue on the agenda tonight? Counsel President Freeman, put a motion on the table.
Still waiting to see if someone was going to come up. So I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2019, adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partition, sorry, and subdivisions, repealing Resolution R 2018-2896.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2019, adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions, repealing R 2018-2896. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 8B, which is the Civic Center Digital Message Board. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and counsel. For some time now, the council has expressed interest in placing an electronic message sign in front of City Hall on Chamala Road to announce public meetings or other useful information. The budget has had a placeholder for this item for several years. The city manager conducted an informal solicitation. We only got one proposal back. Really, there's only one sign company in town that's familiar with this, and the Portland ones didn't want to come down here, I think is probably what it amounted to. But it'd be a double-sided reader board in monument style with a kind of a masonry base to match the brickwork on the building, and would integrate with the network, be easy to change the copy, if you will, from inside the building. The sign is approximately $27,650. That does not include the cost of the masonry base or the electrical work, which staff is roughly estimating at $5,000 to $10,000. But when we looked at it, we discovered that the sign as proposed could not be allowed because it is too large in size. And without going into a lot of extremely boring detail with regard to how you do a percentage of the sign with regard to electronic signs, et cetera, the wall sign that we have, the lettering on the outside is approximately 40 square feet, and with electronic sign, we'd only be allowed a total of 48. And eight square feet is pretty small to see if you're driving past. The proposal from the sign company was 17 and a half square feet. So the issue is what to do with regard to this, and I'll get into those options in a minute. One thing I wanted to point out, as I indicated in the staff report, we'd be looking at, and we don't have a proposal back from Salem Sign Company yet, but the proposed drawing that's in your packet, we'd be looking at more of a square sign. Nate proposed that maybe we could get some savings by that, because we would not be able to include the lettering "City of Kaiser" on the sign anyway. So instead of a gable kind of design with an arch, it would be just a straight frame. So it might be slightly cheaper, we haven't got the quote back on that. So I want to make sure everybody understands, this is not the final design of what that would be. Theoretically, a sign variance could be applied for, but we really don't match the criteria for that, so it's not really as a practical option. So with that, the options that I laid out for counsel on the second page of the staff report would be, one, to not construct an electronic message sign. And if you choose that option, then we don't have to have authority to apply for the conditional use permit or go forward with the contract with the sign company. Two, we could choose a smaller electronic sign, as I indicated earlier, eight square feet. That's just probably not going to be readable realistically. Or three, we could reduce the size of the wall sign, and again, that was right after the staff report. You have the picture there like this. There's two lines of copy on that, the total of roughly 40 square feet. You could remove either one of those lines of copy, and that would reduce it enough so that the total square footage would be 48 square feet, including electronic sign, and you'd have enough room to do it. The other option, kind of as a corollary to that, is, well, let me get into that in the recommendations then. So the recommendations after that, as you can see in the staff report, is, A, pass a motion indicating which one you want to do, which of those three options I laid out. And B, if you want to use option two or three, then you'd want to move forward to authorize the city manager to apply for the conditional use permit. And if you choose option three, which is to reduce the wall sign, let me know how you want to reduce it, either take the "City of Kaiser" off or that other line off that says "City Hall, Police, Community Center." The other possible option, I'll call it option C1, I guess, is you could say, can we just change the sign on the wall? We were trying not to spend any money, so we really didn't talk among staff as that option, we could look at doing that, too. That kind of sign probably wouldn't be real expensive, but we'd have to look at what would be readable and what kind of copy you would like, which we could come back and do later if you want to choose that option. We can, we could, your option would be to go through that decision tree I laid out there for you and say, on the third one, direct us to come back with a different kind of design that would be size-wise fit, and we could make the decision on what that sign would look like later. So I apologize for not adding that, I guess, as a possible sub-option, if you will, but that would be the other direction you could go. So I hope I haven't confused you too much. That's, that's kind of it for my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm going to dive in first, and then I'll go to, I see Counselor Parsons hand up. So somewhere it's got to say "City of Kaiser." Just saying. So, did anybody disagree with that one? Okay, first of all, before we dive into this, does anybody think we should not do an electronic sign and put an end to this conversation?
No.
All right, so option one's off the table. Electronic sign is something we want to have a discussion about. Counselor?
I'm sorry to interrupt. If that was the idea, you could make an initial decision to just say, keep the upper line that says "City of Kaiser," take the lower line off, and then revisit the idea of changing the sign at your pleasure, if you see what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So that, that would be, that would be the most easy way to go. And then, you know, if there's some sentiment towards reducing the "City of," I don't, not sure you have a lot of room to work with, so, you know, we could look at that closer if that's what you wanted to do.
[inaudible]
Well, "City of Kaiser" on the building makes sense. The reader board needs to be readable, the 17 and a half seems like a reasonable size. If you go any smaller, it's not worth doing, in my opinion, and we want to make sure that we have the opportunity for people to be easily able to see messages and so forth. Anyway, that's, I'm just starting with my two cents worth. So we are talking about a reader board, and we're talking about, I'm getting from kind of the looks on faces, we're talking about removing a line of, from the building, so we can have the proper-sized reader board. Is that kind of the direction this conversation is going to go? Counselor Parsons.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam Mayor, by the way. So my, my thing was, how come we, how come it can't say "The City of Kaiser" up here again, say that to me?
Because we're tight, that's part of the sign, and I'll let Nate explain that, because he wants to say something, I'm sure.
Yeah, I would like that, Nate, please explain.
So if you add the "City of Kaiser" on top, then you have to include the entire area of what it says, "City of Kaiser" and the message board, everything. So our sign code --
Oh, as the 17 and a half feet.
Yes.
The 17 and a half feet is only --
Dave, we were just confused over here, because you --
No, it's only the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So then you would have to reduce, you'd go back to reducing the size of the electronic portion of the sign.
Right. So because, because if we would have been able to have that, then it would have been a no-brainer to take off the "City of Kaiser" off the wall, but if we're not going to have that, we need to keep the "City of Kaiser" on the wall, and I think people already know what that is, because the reader board's going to kind of tell them what's going on inside this building.
Well, okay, so if you took "City of Kaiser" off of the building, if there was nothing on the building, we did not act, I did not actually calculate that.
No, that's not what we were saying.
No, I said we have to leave that, because we have to have someplace that says the "City of Kaiser."
Well, that's kind of what we thought.
That's what we thought, too.
So my thing is, we need to take away the lower line, I think that's our obvious choice right now, unless we can find something to come up with later after we've gotten it put in. And then my second question, follow-up please with this, my brain seems to think that we put away, was it not $10,000 a year for five years for this? So it was like a $50,000 project?
I double-checked with Tim this afternoon, and he, he didn't have the exact figure, but it's somewhere close to $60,000.
Okay, so if that's the case, then --
Can I stop to spend all of that?
I, no, I understand that, I do, I understand.
Just saying.
Your budget's kind of making --
He's got hers to deal with.
I'm just thinking about, I'm just thinking about lettering on the building, and you know, you're saying it because of extra costs, but if there's a way we can redo it and still have our 17 and a half, then I would suggest that, just to keep it all. Otherwise, my vote is to take away the bottom line.
It seems to me that the bottom portion of the verbiage is superfluous, especially if you have an electronic reader board sign, you could scroll that information across it anyway.
Right.
So in my opinion, okay, you could flash it once every 15 seconds and give Nate an epileptic attack or whatever.
You did change it.
Yeah, so anyway, you could post that on the reader, but you don't need it on the building. I would recommend against trying to reconfigure, let's not spend the money, you don't have to.
Counsel Herrera.
I agree with Chris on that, and I, you know, if you're going to put a reader board, make it so us old folks can read it, I mean, make it big as possible. So that's, that's the whole idea of a reader board when you go by, because you don't want to, you know. But I agree with Chris, and I think that you can always like slide in the, "City of Kaiser" is good, and the bigger the better. So I like what I'm seeing. Thank you.
All right.
For your work, guys.
Counsel, Counsel President Freeman, and then Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with the verbiage, City Hall Police and Community Center, could, this is a question probably for Nate, I'm guessing. You always love it when I ask you questions. Could we take, just so, because we have the letters, and this may be out of our sign code and way off variance and all of that, but could we, could we not take those words and put them on the back of our building out here somewhere?
They already are there.
Are they out there? Oh, see how observant I, how observant I am? Okay.
Yeah, so the backside, you're not limited. You could put them again because we're, it's only, it's only those that face the street that are visible from the public right away. So that's all we count against any business. So you could post them somewhere on this side of the building if you wanted to put them, you know, on this end of the building or something. That would be possible, too.
We could always save that for another day.
We can save that for another day.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure we won't throw them away.
Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess of those three things, the City Hall Police and Community Center, if we just put the City of Kaiser, I would think City Hall and Community Center would be fairly obvious, but the police, not all police stations are at city halls. And I guess that would be my one concern, that people would be able to note that that was part of this structure.
So if you look at the wall sign there with the two lines-
I'm looking at that.
Basically, one or the other has to go entirely. The square footage, Shane and I went through some numbers last week before staff report. And although that's bigger at the top, City of Kaiser, it's shorter. And so the one at the bottom, the way that it's measured, like the upper one is like 21 square feet, and the bottom one is like 19 square feet. So you don't, you don't have any room to jiggle around at leaving anything, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. And I guess my line of thinking was more, do we need that information in some other way? I wasn't suggesting leaving just that there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I was unclear about that, and I apologize. But I was just thinking, you know, yes, we take that line off, and that makes sense. But do we need to put police somewhere else on the Shemawa side, I guess, is my, I'm throwing it out for discussion and question, more for anything else.
I'm not sure exactly how many inches you have left over. We perhaps could look at that. If the council was interested in having police identified somewhere, we just didn't take one of those words apart from the others.
Yeah.
Maybe it's even a moot point, I guess. I don't, I don't even know.
Well, as Chris mentioned, you can put it on the reader board, too. I mean, in between regular messages, you know, community rooms, police, and then have a message.
Every 15 seconds.
Until we can change it to eight.
At the moment.
I hear I'm not doing that sign code again.
Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you can indulge me just for half a second.
Go for it.
Who would we have to talk to about a variance?
Us.
Well, here's the thing about that. And I've, that was actually, it's funny you mention that because that was the first thing that came across my mind when our own city attorney and my planning director came to me and said, hey, you can't do this because, because our sign code won't let you. I'm like, well, change the sign code. And of course, the thing is that the sign code is a very emotional issue for businesses in this community. And if we're going to hold businesses to a standard, we need to hold ourselves to the same standard. And providing ourselves a variance against a standard that we hold everybody else to is, as Shannon likes to say, and it is now my favorite word, unseemly. So.
If I can, it's even more than just the ethical part of it. It's also that there are specific approval criteria for variance. And when you're building a brand-new sign, you don't meet any of that criteria. There's nothing unusual about our need. There's nothing odd about our placement. There's nothing odd about the construction. We would not be able to write findings to justify a variance.
Counsel Kohler, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The placement I see is pretty much ground level. Is that going to be subject to vandalism at that height?
Inasmuch as anything is, probably. So, and it, ground, it'll be a little higher than ground level, but yeah, it'll, there's the possibility of that, certainly.
Was there a consideration to make it higher, like the sign at McNary's, McNary High School?
We had not considered that, but it's possible we could.
The one at the fire district is at ground level, and I'm not aware that they've had issues with vandalism. I mean, anything's prone to it. You always get some yammyo that decides that, you know, they can't go on another moment without defacing somebody else's property. But I don't see that that's an attractive nuisance in, any more than Thomas Dove was after the initial jokester decorated that statue. I'll refresh people's memory later on if they want, but anyway. All right. Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Curious on the placement, where is this going? It's going out here, but what, from a visibility standpoint in front of the building or whichever way I'm going, where would you be putting this in relation to the poles, the trees?
Well, I'm gonna let Chris address that. We're gonna come back if the council wanted to move forward with this and as part, you'll be approving the actual contract. So we don't have the contract because we decided not to go forward with the contract yet without getting further direction. So when we come back with the contract, you can talk about that. We've talked about two general locations, and I'll let Chris kind of explain the pluses and minuses of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. So the two general locations that we've contemplated are right out in front, here. So either one or both of the trees, if they don't eventually become story poles, would, you know, they would come down. To the east of those is a spot where there is a conduit that could potentially have power run through it. I hope it's possible, because there's a light pole out there, and even though it's, you couldn't use the same power from the light pole. So there's an area there, and that would provide, that would, that would put the sign right in front of the main entrance of the building, which would make some sense. Some other thoughts have been that placing it by our main entrance would also make some sense. And so, or I'm sorry, yeah, main entrance where people drive in may make some sense because some people who are not familiar with the area may drive toward the light and miss the entrance and then have to turn around and go back. So we're still kind of thinking through that, but probably one of those locations, either right in front or over by the main driving entrance. One of those two.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so it sounds like we've had discussion around going toward option three, which is to delete one of the signs off the building. And what I'm hearing by consensus is the second line, City Hall Police Community Center, would be the one to come down. Is there anybody who disagrees with that? And then to go forward with a 17 and a half-foot square, 17 and a half-square-foot electronic message sign. So by consensus, is that the direction we would like staff to go with putting together the next steps? Do we need to-
Do we need to do a minute motion or anything?
So, do you need a minute motion on this?
Yeah, they're saying we need a motion.
Okay. All right. So what does that read here? Let me get back to that paragraph. Oh, here, okay, so theoretically-
Under A.
Under A. Thank you. So pass a, pass a motion adopting one of the options above. So Counsel President Freeman, I'm putting motion on the table.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt C.
It's actually three.
Three? Oh, instead of, oh, sorry, you're right. It's item C, option three, which would direct staff to remove the city, oh, I'm going the wrong way for my picture, sorry, City Hall Police and Community Center from the wall of the building.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to go with option three, which will reduce the sign, the size of the wall sign, deleting the second line, and go with the 17 and a half-square-foot electronic message sign. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Also would need a minute motion there to authorize the city manager. I laid out-
Apply for- To apply for the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay. So if we're taking care of A and C, now we have to do B.
Right.
Sure.
It just looks like remotely tiny.
It'll do that sometime. So, right here.
Use your microphone since it's right here. Okay. I move that the Kaiser City Council authorize the Kaiser City Manager to apply for conditional use permit for the electronic message sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council authorize the city manager to apply for a conditional use permit for the electronic message sign. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Don't forget the every 15 seconds.
Moving on. Why don't we go to the consent calendar now, shall we? Counsel President Freeman, what's on the consent calendar tonight?
We have, if I can count correctly tonight, four items on the consent calendar. Item A is a resolution authorizing the chief of police to enter into an inter-agency memorandum of understanding for license plate scanning with Washington State Patrol, repealing R-2019-2952. Item B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with R and R General Contracting for upgrades to ADA curb ramps and pedestrian traffic signals on River Road. And ADA is American Disabilities Act, so we're complying there. Resolution C is authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a state preparedness and incident response equipment grant. Item D is approval of the February 4th, 2019 regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Okay, seeing none, Counsel President Freeman.
I move approval of the consent calendars, item A through D.
Sorry.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I'm not, okay. So let's go along then to council liaison reports. Counsel Kohler, shall we start with you tonight, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. February 6th, I attended the Claggett Creek Watershed Council meeting. Matt Lawyer was elected as the chair for that, for that council. The annual civic center cleanup is nine to 10, nine to 1 o'clock. I think there's a flyer on that. They're excited to have a lot of people in the community come to that again, like last year. And they said, as long as there's less than two inches of snow, they will continue, they'll do it that day.
And he's not kidding, either.
That's what they said. There's a couple other things from that, is that on the Saturday, April 20th, is a soggy day in the park, Earth Day event, that would be something fun for everybody to go And then I attended the Volcanoes Dinner with Mayor Clark, Councillors Parsons and Herrera, and former Mayor Dennis Coho, and Counsel Amy Ryan. It's exciting to see what's happening upcoming season, June 14th, play ball. So that's pretty exciting. A very special thank you to Counsel Reed for covering my meetings on February 14th while I was at the coast with my wife. Thank you. And Wednesday, February 20th, we have the Willamette Valley Council, the government's annual meeting here, 6 o'clock. A special thank you to band director Chris Nelson for his efforts. We'll have three different groups from McNary High School playing at that dinner for us. Appreciate them a lot. And Wednesday, February 27th, is the Kaiser Community Dinner. Like, see a lot of folks come to that again. And February is Heart Month. You see the little heart that I have, a little red dress that I have. A lot of people have asked me, what, why am I wearing a red dress? But it's February, it is Heart Awareness Month, so take care of your tickers. We only have one.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Also, 27th is, I think we had to move the Kaiser Little League Task Force to that night, too, so I guess you'll have to eat fast. But no, thank you for doing all that. Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, I guess I, one of the first things I did in February is Counsel Kohler and I were guests for a merit badge clinic for citizens in the community for a couple Boy Scout troops in town. They were the ones that helped do our flags, flags, or, sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance last council meeting. So that was a lot of fun, good discussion. We had the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting on the first Thursday of the month, as they always are. And in that, we were gearing up for our next month's annual meeting. So if you live in that area, please, please, please plan on coming to join us for the first weekend in, the first Thursday, rather, in March for our annual meeting. So that was a good, good discussion there. We had a work session that we did some legal training, and always good information, and never enough, really. So thank you for that. Had a heritage board meeting, a Kaiser Heritage Foundation board meeting. Went to the revitalization open house even briefly, and we had a really good community turnout for that, and that was, that was good to see. We also had a stormwater advisory committee meeting. Our, as many of you know, our permit from DEQ has finally been finalized and will take effect on March 1st. And our task in that committee is to develop the stormwater and management program document. And we will be working on that for the next several months to make sure that we have all our pieces in place to be compliant with that permit. So some good work will be happening there in the next few months. At the traffic safety bikeways and pedestrian meeting, we talked about the different project assignments and some possible budget requests for the upcoming budget session. And again, lots of interesting projects and things going on in that. And, and thank you for all those people who are willing to step up and serve in that capacity. We had a presentation of a staged reading of a play, of a play called Art at the Kaiser Homegrown Theater. And that was really an interesting experience and very well done. Upcoming, we have a personnel policy meeting, and the build will, and that is coming up next Thursday, right? Yep, 21st. And also, the same night, we have a buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis meeting. And so, a lot of important work happening in that as well. So that is what I've been up to and what is upcoming.
All right. I want to take a pause here. That stormwater permit has been a tremendous lift on the part of Elizabeth Sag Miller and her staff. And I want to give a real shout-out to that work. It's highly technical, is quite complex, and she and her staff have been able to navigate, no pun intended, this process to make sure that we got the permit and did it right. So I want to really give a shout-out to Elizabeth and her staff. Great job. And I know Mr. Lawyer will pass that on to her and their group. Well done. Well done. Counsel President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just gonna put a challenge out to all the council members to attend the Kaiser cleanup on March 16th from 9:00 to noon. I've done it several years. Counsel Reed has done it several years. Dress warm. Bring your wheelbar-
And fly.
Yeah. Bring your wheelbarrows, good gloves, rakes, whatever. It's a lot of fun, and a lot of people turn out, and I'm sure there's a cookie or two waiting for you when you're all done. waiting for you when you're all done. So I've, want to give a shout out to Mr. Lawyer and the contractor who worked with the sewer lines on Robindale. I have been approached by two people that live on that street, and they could not say enough things about the contractor, how well the street was maintained every day, cleaned up, the mud, very, worked with all the neighbors in and out. I heard one neighbor had to wait just a little bit to get, you know, onto Shamawa, but hopefully they'll reach out to you individually, because I did give them their name, but they were just very, very impressed, so.
Thank you. I've heard actually from one resident on Robindale, so, thank you very much. I'll pass that along.
I did attend the Revitalization Open House, and I'm always impressed when there's new residents of Kaiser that attend events that I've not seen at other events, and I think Nate could probably attest to that as well, so I'm always grateful that new people are showing up and actually speaking some really good comments that I heard. I attended the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting on the 14th, and I think because it was Valentine's Day, there was hardly anyone there. Nate can attest to that. He was one of the speakers. I think there was as many speakers as West Kaiser residents, which is, it's usually a big group, so I'm guessing it's Valentine's Day and people had other, more important things to do. But one of our speakers was Eric Bandonis, who's a Marion County parole and probation officer, and he comes quarterly and gives a great update, and Nate provided an update on the Kaiser revitalization plan, and I know, did Kathy Lincoln? She was supposed to be there on a chariots update, so, okay, so that was the other speaker. And so our next meeting will be March 14th, and we have our own mayor giving the state of the city address, so 7:00 PM, March 14th, for West Kaiser here at Civic Center. I attended the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast, which is always lively and fun. Also, the council orientation. I'll be at the Council of Government Dinner tomorrow night, so we all can have a great dinner and fellowship. And then next, no, how about Thursday, is the Personnel Committee meeting as well. So it's another busy week. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just a couple things going on. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity to go to the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast this week with the mayor, and that was eye-opening, very interesting. It was exciting to be around all three of the county commissioners, and the sheriff being there, and President Freeman as well. It was great. We had a really good discussion, lot of interest since the bridge situation had come to fruition, or lack thereof, and very eye-opening, and I'm excited to learn more. It's like, oh, so, that was pretty, it was pretty lightweight for me, so.
We have to change that.
Yeah, it's coming. Thank you very much. Councilor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Council Reed mentioned the stormwater, so I don't have to go there, and Council President Freeman mentioned the work session, so I don't have to go there, but I will go to the Kaiser Citizens Academy. So, what an amazing class this is. I can't wait for you guys to go through it. But one of the things that we did endure last week, so heartbreaking, was our new officer that's in the academy right now, oh, they tased him, and then they pepper sprayed him, and he was a good sport. He really, really was. But I, my heartstrings hurt for him. I did, just for a minute, just for a minute. And then he was fine, and he popped up and he was great. But it, we're learning all sorts of things. We're being interactive with some things too, and, and next, next Tuesday, we're going to actually go to the Marion County Jail, get another tour of that. We're also going to do, all sign up to do ride-alongs, and we're going to go to the Communication Center too, I believe. So we got lots of, lots of things still planned, so that was a lot of fun. Okay, so somebody already mentioned volcanoes, that was, gosh, see, I'm almost at cog dinner, done, 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 done. Okay, coming up, KLL Task Force on the 27th, and I have the Volunteer Coordinating Committee is going to be next month. We're still recruiting for the Points of Interest Committee. We have one vacancy. We're also recruiting for the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and this is the committee that's, that Council Reed just talked about, what we're tasked with doing, and if anyone has any stormwater management experience, or just anything with water, you know, come and, come and help us out. We could, we could use some extra hands to get this done, what we need to do. Also, always looking for youth committee liaisons, so, so anybody want to sign up? We got some more committees for them to, to get on. I think, other than that, I'm done.
Thank you all for reporting.
Thank you very much. Councilor Ferrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What did you guys do to Officer Quintero?
They tased him.
Tased him, and what else?
Tased him.
Didn't they?
Pepper sprayed.
Wow, waterboard him too? Or just?
No, we didn't do it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to that, by the way, that class. Tuesday, pretty much everybody's gone over, we've done everything, but Tuesday, Zaida did a very good job of reporting on the, on the parks, and I got to say something, Jeff, the, the, planning those stations, he really is a go, he got after it, and they, watching that whole process was amazing. Reminded me of the tennis, or volleyball guy, and same type of process, and that's why we're so grateful for our parks to be able to have, leverage our money that way. I think it's really great. And I want to compliment Nate for, I didn't get a chance to talk to you today night, but we came out of our parks, I had two meetings, but I, I was impressed by the situations there, and looking forward for that Wallery Park expansion, and, but anyway, I love all the, what you all had up there, and, and I was really impressed by the explanation from the folks that you had from the firm, so, very good. Also, I attended all the same thing, volcanoes. I'm actually working with Mr., the, what was the name of our president from volcanoes?
Oh, Mitch Graff.
Mitch, yeah, I can't forget that name. Yeah, we're working on, he's getting suggestions from a local community to do a, they're going to have a Latino week or night, or something like that, two nights, and they're wanting to, they're reaching out to the community to try to see ideas on what to do, and you know, exactly, and I'm pretty excited about that, that's really cool. So that's totally cool. I, I'm also, Randy Vigiano, who is from here, the famous volleyball state champion coach, we all know her, I think Heather knows her pretty well. And, well, she invited me to talk to an avid class in the newest high school in Bend, but we're going to do it Skype, and the reason she wanted a Kaiser person was because, first of all, she wanted to, she has some Latino students that are, that she wanted to kind of show them the way, and also, she grew up in Kaiser and wants to talk about Kaiser, what Kaiser's like, you know, and so he can brag about Kaiser a little bit, so. Also, on, on March 1st, I've been invited to speak at Whittaker on Kindness Week. I gotta, I don't know why they asked me, but it's going to be kind of interesting. And, and again, my compliments to Shannon for the great work session, and I, it never gets old, we, I learn something every time, a little, and I know it takes time to do that, and for the new counselors, that was really, really cool for all of us in general. And I think that's pretty much, you guys have done pretty much a good job covering everything else, looking forward to, oh yes, my condolences to the Beach family. We lost Carl Beach, and I don't know if you guys knew him or not, I had the pleasure of meeting his family and working with him on several things, and just a real gentleman. I mean, a real, real gentleman, and he's going to be missed, so, I don't know if you guys knew him, but he was a very good guy, so, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Youth, Youth Counselor Ferris.
Okay, I have a few things. I believe you guys went over this last time, but I wanted to reiterate it. On Tuesday, February 26th, as far as I know, at 7:30 AM, there will be a Kaiser Community CTE Showcase epic Nary, and it's a great opportunity to see the career technical education programs we offer, and, and get any questions answered related to the CTE programs we have. Community partners are going to be coming there, and we just, will be happy to see you, see you there. Closer to today, Thursday on the 21st at 6:30 PM, at the, in the McNary Library, there's going to be a junior college jumpstart, which is basically planning for senior year, how to get prepared, how to understand college applications, financial aid, all of that stuff is going to be explained at that night. It's a great opportunity to go. The LGBTQ Youth Film Festival will also be happening on Saturday, February 23rd, 10 AM to 9 PM, at the Kaiser Heritage Center. It's free, it's, and it's also hosted by McNary's Gay-Straight Alliance, so, good luck to you all, and I hope to see you there. The, on Tuesday, February 26th, at 6:30 PM in the McNary, oh, no, at, sorry, this one is on March 14th, sorry about that. There's apprenticeships on the job, paid training, college education, presentation. So if you're interested to get paid on the job training, or any information regarding apprenticeships, this is the night to go. It's in the College and Career Center. Also, McNary High School has recently been chosen to host the 2019 Capital College Night, 6 to 8:30 PM on April 16th, and that means high schools from Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties will be invited to attend, and public and private universities and colleges will be able to bring all of their information throughout the Willamette Valley at this college fair, while also providing sessions for students and parents to learn about the college planning process. My last thing, I believe I've said this quite a few times, but it's always good for a reminder. McNary High School is still looking for parents and community volunteers to serve as mentors and morning greeters for our students, and if you have any questions about that, go ahead and contact Rochelle Ferris in the College and Career Center for more information.
Thank you so much. So I'll back cleanup here. Just a couple of things to add. On the 6th, I attended a meeting for the Council of Governments. A lot of the work has been going into planning the event tomorrow night, which is our annual meeting and awards banquet. I am so pleased that all of us as a city council will be there. I've been serving as the board there, board chair this year, and because of an election result, I'll be serving as board chair again for 2019. So we have a great team. Tracy Davis has worked very hard with Denise Van Dyke at the Council of Governments in helping put together this event where we will welcome folks from all over Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties to come and be part of the celebration, so we look forward that, to that tomorrow night. I went to a celebration of leadership for the now former mayor of Woodburn, Kathy Figgley, and the former council president, Frank Lonergan. It was a wonderful community event. I got to work with Mayor Figgley on a number of projects, most notably the Woodburn Interchange, but she served about 28 years, I believe, all told, between mayor, city council, planning commission parks, whatever she was involved in, and has given a tremendous amount to the community of Woodburn and left it better because of her service. On the 9th of February, I got to be one of the guest judges for the Bonaventure Valentine's Day Dessert Contest. It was delightful to meet some of the residents at our Bonaventure community and to taste some really yummy desserts, in a small quantity, since those tend to go straight to my hips. Let's see, the Cost Growth Open House has been covered. ASSED Core, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, we had a speaker from the Oregon Freight Alliance talking about the importance of freight and trucking and that industry in Oregon. It was extremely well presented, and I encourage folks to look up some of the materials posted on the ASSED Core website from that presentation. Talked about art, so coming up, tomorrow morning, I have the ASSED Core Agricultural Breakfast up at Mount Angel. In the afternoon, I'll be attending the Leadership Roundtable with Congressman Schrader, and then I've got coffee with Kathy this Saturday at El Patron at 10 AM. And we also have a first with a small anime convention that will be at the Quality Inn this weekend. It's called MiyakoCon, and it will run Saturday and Sunday. This is a small group of a very large industry and events that happen all over the United States. Some of the big ones have between 30 and 35,000 in attendance. I've been at some of those. So this is a group trying to get folks here, these are young people, all ages, not only into the fan type of work, but also oftentimes provide professional training in a number of the industries, in voiceover acting, digital media, and other related arts. So if you see people walking around in some attire that you generally don't see around town, they are probably heading over to the Quality Inn. On Tuesday, the 26th, we will meet, SCATS will meet, which is the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, which is our metropolitan planning organization for transportation. Little League Task Force on the 27th, and the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee will meet on the 28th. I would also like to note, we, thank you, Councilor Herrera, for recognizing former councillor Carl Beach, who passed away on the 11th of February. He was indeed a very kind and gracious leader, and he left this community much better for his service over the years, not only on the city council, but in other capacities as well. On the 14th, another fixture at our Oregon State Capitol passed away, and that was Evelyn Wood. So anybody who's been down to the Capitol for the last 30-plus years, she would, she would be at her information desk in front of the, the House of Representatives, and meet and greet, direct people wherever they needed to go, very knowledgeable, friendly, and just a wonderful person, making people feel welcome, and at our Oregon State Capitol. So she was, I believe, 96, and she was there until 2017. Her son is also a city councillor for the city of Dallas, and I will be, he will be here, I believe, tomorrow night, I hope, for the cog dinner. But that, community service, the service to, through government, is something that apparently she passed on to him as well. So our condolences to the Wood family, and our great thanks for what she did to help people feel comfortable in their building here in Salem. So that is all I have. Let's go to other business then. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy. Chief Teague. Mr. Lawyer. Mr. Brown.
Just wanted to mention on the Buildable Lands Inventory, Housing Needs Analysis on Thursday, that is going to be kind of a blend open house and presentation. So our consultants are going to be, basically make a short presentation. It starts at seven o'clock, this is Thursday night, and then there will be stations around on different aspects. And basically, just so everybody knows, the Buildable Lands Inventory is kind of the kingpin to all the questions about the urban growth boundary, and how much land is available, how much land is needed, what kinds of housing types are needed. So yes, it's another one of these things that are lots of numbers and lots of charts and that sort of thing, but it is essential to these questions. So I strongly advise everybody who's interested in the subject to be there to try and understand what's being put together.
Shannon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I do have a couple of items under written communications. This is a note, it says, "Dear Kathy, what a nice surprise to receive one of the copies of the proclamation from the city of Kaiser honoring Dr. Jerry McGee for his life, contributions, and achievements to the city of Kaiser. It was my honor to be a witness to this for the last 10-plus years and hear the many stories of the history of Kaiser that happened before I knew Jerry. Thank you to all who had a part in the proclamation honoring Jerry. Best wishes, Diane Monroe." And we've received this letter, says, "Dear City Manager, Mayor Clark, and Councillors, my wife Cheryl and I want to send a quick note to say a big thank you for what you are doing for Kaiser, and us too, on the gunshot we took last June. This has been a long process, and we are hoping that because Kaiser has taken at least five different incidents of gunfire across the river, that a judge will order Northwest Rock to not allow shooting in that area. We are in the final stages of that process, and we have a hearing set in April. My wife has been diagnosed with PTSD as a result of the bullet landing two feet away from her. We are hoping for full recovery, and because of your help, we expect to get there. Because of efforts by Peter Courtney and Kim Thatcher, there is a new Senate Bill Number Five being sent, sent just for Kaiser. Hopefully this bill will help get this issue resolved and shooting stopped. Chris, thank you for taking this issue so seriously, and hats off to the council for trying to make Kaiser a safe place to live. One final note on this, Shannon Johnson has been a rock star representing Kaiser on this, and hats off to him as well. Best regards to all, the Bowers, Tom, and Cheryl." And I would second that on Chris and Shannon for their work.
Madam Mayor, that bill number has Madam Mayor, that bill number has changed, and I'm not sure the new number, but that is not the correct number anymore.
Okay. Love to hear the update on that as well. We received this letter from Mayor Bennett. It's a copy of one that was sent to Phil Ditzler, the Administrator for the Oregon Division, Federal Highway Administration, and to Matt Garrett, the Director of the Oregon Department of Transportation. Subject, "Salem City Council Decision to Take No Further Action to Complete the Final Environmental Impact Statement for the Salem River Crossing Project. Dear Mr. Ditzler and Mr. Garrett, at its meeting on February eleven, 2019, the Salem City Council vote is six to three to take no further action on the remaining land use actions needed for the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, to complete the final environmental impact statement with the currently identified preferred alternative for the Salem River Crossing Project. Members of the council are aware that with this vote, ODOT will not complete the final environmental impact statement for a build alternative, and that ODOT and the Federal Highway Administration will pursue a course of action that will effectively close the Salem River Crossing Project with a no-build record of decision. I want to express my disappointment with this outcome, and my appreciation to you and your staff for the guidance and support you have provided the city of Salem over the last thirteen years of the Salem River Crossing Project. Respectfully yours, Chuck Bennett, Mayor." I've been on that Oversight Committee almost since the beginning. Counselor Walsh was on there, and then I succeeded him when he left council, and a lot of work went into that. So it is done. We also received a letter that I will pass on to the City Manager regarding the National Flood Insurance Program, and as the, as FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, is working to implement the National Marine Fisheries Service Biological Opinion and Reasonable and Prudent Alternatives that were issued, on the implementation, they've got more acronyms in here than I can shake a stick at, oh my goodness. On the National Flood Insurance Program, so essentially what it's saying is that they are going to be delaying, let's see, consequently FEMA plans to address the desire for our stakeholders for taking a more efficient approach by delaying the April 2016 National Marine, National Marine Fisheries, Fisheries Service Biological Opinion Implementation Timeline for the full three-year extension or until October fifth, 2021, to allow FEMA to provide opportunities, to provide communities with greater certainty, maintaining as much flexibility as practicable for a more holistic response, encompassing all of the RPA requirements that FEMA has the authority to implement without developing regulations. I think in plain speak, they're revisiting what they were going to do and are going to come back to us later on anything having to do with the flood insurance program. Did I interpret that correctly, Mr. Brown?
Yes, but it goes further than just flood. It's also the biological aspect, where the court has ruled that anything that's in a floodway is also considered wildlife habitat, and so there were going to be some pretty, I won't use the word draconian, but I'm looking for a different word, some pretty heavy conditions that were being contemplated. So the delay to try and find a suitable compromise is not a bad thing.
It sounded like good news.
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to share that. That was all I have for Written Communications. Agenda input on next Monday, February twenty-fifth, at 5:45, we will meet in regular session for our city council goals for the 2019-2020 biennium. We will meet in regular session on March fourth, starting at 7 PM. On March eleventh, we will have the annual meeting of the Long Range Planning Task Force, and that's at 6 PM, and then on March eighteenth, at 7 PM, we will meet in regular session. That is all I have for Agenda Input. Is there anything else this evening for the good of the order? Seeing none, it is 8:15, and we are adjourned.